Mayor Crane, Councilmember Copenheather.
Here.
Bolser.
Here.
Easter, Pierre Smith.
Here.
Randles.
Here.
And Attorney Powell.
Any additions to the minutes? Minutes stand through.
Somebody took the batteries out.
You have three documents in front of you. The first one is the Aegis Task Order Regarding new water line. We would start in the western part of town where it comes across the river. And this Includes the site visit review of existing data calculations, cost estimates, Operation Graphic Development. And these are the people that introduced me to Mike Klein Peter on the that's doing the income survey. And would be our Get writing our grant for Okra to get money to start on that.
This is the entire engineering study and grant application.
Yes, yes. I'm sorry, Brad.
I move for approval.
Okay, I have a second. Is there any further?
I'm not real sure what we're.
I'm sorry, Aegis, the Aegis contract.
Yeah, and so how long is this supposed to take?
It's probably gonna take a little while.
It's 28,200 dollars a month?
No, 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 that's the total for what they're doing on this phase. This Is supposed to be ready to get us ready to Cost estimates that would be pretty much ready, the engineering, ready to go when we have the money in place.
Okay, and then just so that we're clear, we pay them a percentage monthly based on the project? Because this is what this is saying.
Only as far as they only to keep up with what they've done. As they do work, they'll bill us that much. And I can have.
In other words, once they've done 25% of the work, they'll bill us for 25% of the total job.
Right.
Okay.
So we pay them as the project goes along.
And I can have them come in if you would like and present it.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure that that's.
Yeah.
Because the way this is typed up, it's not real clear.
They'll they will just do it as well. It says Aegis B L N USA Inc. Is to be compensated monthly upon percent complete. So if they're 10% complete, that'd be 28 Twenty dollars.
Right, so the the total amount for the project then is 28,200 dollars. Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions or? The funding person is Working on the income survey now to Okra. I have a meeting with the head of Okra in Indianapolis on.
What time?
Nine o'clock in Carmel.
Okay.
And then I have a meeting in Carmel at their Their fire fire department with other mayors To Go over mayor things, issues that are going on. Okay, Paula?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Motion passes by vote to engage Aegis. And we've engaged Klein Peter Consulting, so we're well on our way getting this thing done. The next one is a proposal From W T H Technology. They're the ones that Did our G I S layer conversion on our water maps. And that one was done through a grant on the lead, no lead pipes and To get do away with that. This one is the G S layer conversion on our sanitary utility and storm utility if we would choose to take both of them. They have talked to Casey and I about this and I would suggest we do this. They're gonna digitize our maps, our paper map, never hasn't never been done. And helped helped immensely on our Water, so I would suggest this.
What are your thoughts on that, Casey?
I would recommend it.
And why?
So we have, we don't have to go through each map and try to find something that's all on the laptop done. And they update them as we change things.
It's it's G I S. It could be the layers could be put on The county system on Beacon added to it, then contractors would be able to access that. We've had problems. They'll take all our maps for 7650 And do all the training and it worked out really good on the water because they put that, you know, we know where the valves are. Most of them.
Val tigers.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Storm water, I don't know. What do you think, Casey? I don't.
That's a necessity, but if I look at quotes more, I don't remember what it.
It's 1850 and 185, the annual client maintenance.
I would recommend that. Talk to Casey that she runs it. That way they can give updates.
Yeah. Which we take the maintenance on water, we do that now. And I would recommend doing maintenance on the sanitary sewer layer.
Storm water is a big priority.
Yeah. I would recommend doing the sanitary sewer first and get it done and then we can look at storm water. It's gonna it's gonna actually take more of us going out, Casey and the guys.
Have any maps on storm water that aren't already done.
Yeah.
Liberty.
Yeah. But for 6,500 dollars, 7650 actually count the installation, configuration and training. Definitely worth it.
In fact, it never, none of it's ever been done because of lack of technology prior to. You know, if somebody's doing excavation, we 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 have a rough idea where things are, but we can be feet off. So we find out now that somebody's torn up your entire front yard and figure out how to get there, right? Now, we've already been through the water. This is storm sewer. What other layers do we potentially have left? Sanitary.
Sanitary.
This is.
We would probably do, we could do electrical in the future also, which would identify all poles. Then when you do it, you can you can tell when each pole was installed. I mean, once you start keeping it, yeah, keeping track of it.
So it covers aerial as well as buried.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah. You can kind of keep a rough maintenance schedule on what's been done, so.
Does the city do its own Julie locating?
Yeah.
Okay.
We.
That would help with that as well.
Water and electric, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we have a requirement that as new construction is being done, that all of that is geo-located as it's installed?
Yeah, it'd be part of the maintenance when they update layers. Thing, anytime you have any new.
Or we can add it.
Yeah, once we get it. Yeah. The more you use it, the better you get at it. It's kind of just like a cat, you're actually your icons and add your layers and like.
I mean, is there a benefit to just go ahead and do them both at the same time?
I don't.
We don't have, I don't, we don't have. On the storm sewers.
Right.
Yeah.
We have the camera all up and even see where they're at.
I don't think this is important.
Basically.
I think the sanitary is important. I don't think storm is that important. I think we could go out and do some work on it and And then get with them.
And then and then do that at a later date for the storm water.
That's that's what I would recommend.
So with this proposal, what are you asking for this evening?
I would like to do the, well, Casey, what do you, the storm for sure, or sanitary.
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 So they need their maintenance program on it. I think they'll be that separate per year.
Yeah, yeah. It's 650 dollars a year.
For that.
And you can call them and then they can get onto your computer too and they can help you out right then and there.
So this is without selecting. Suggesting at this time, just the effort pockets. One here, is that correct?
Oh.
7650 plus the plus the 650.
No, this is the 650 is only starting on year two.
So 7650 for.
Yeah. 7650 is What I think we should do right now.
I make the motion to accept that proposal without option one.
Okay.
Just to clarify, you're looking for your motion for the approval to 7650.
Yes, yes. Yeah, the sanitary layer.
I would second.
Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Kathy? Chad?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Motion passes by vote to accept the G I S data conversion for sewer installation, configuration and training for 7,650 dollars. Oh. Yeah, that's all I've got to sign. I'll do, that's not that, though.
Oh, I thought it was the.
Oh, no, that's not. Yeah, no, it's a different. Here's this, that's the. The other document is an interlocal cooperative agreement between the Indiana Department of Transportation And the City of Covington, Indiana concerning cost and maintenance. A trail and erosion channel under the U S Highway 136 Wabash River Bridge. Here's here's all this thing is, is Endot called me and said after the trail was done down Under the under the Wabash River Bridge and said, there's a Some washing out that's taking place down there that they noticed when they came and inspected it. And they said, could the contractor Take run a run a drain down around the pier and down to the river? And take care of that so it won't wash out anymore? This isn't the trail that caused it to wash out. It's just something they noticed that was happening. Not because of the trail or anything. So the the easiest way to do it is the contractor agreed to do it, gave them a price. They agreed. But they, the way the state operates, they will only, they wanted to deal with the Local public agency, which is the City of Covington.
So the contractor then works for us?
Yeah.
Who's the contractor?
No, the contractor is McCullough. He is hired by the community foundation. He doesn't work for us. He he did the work. Roger Azar was the engineer on the job for the foundation. Roger paid him. They agreed on amount. Roger paid him. So then Endot, he he's, you know, trying to invoice and well, he has to invoice us. So we had to sign this agreement just that so they can get the money to pay Roger back.
So it goes through us to the foundation?
No, to the state, the state and us.
The state is paying us.
Roger, Roger is paying McCullough. And if the state pays us, then we've just got to turn around and pay Roger. It's confusing, but that's the state. So.
Page two says Endot will pay the city.
Okay, that's. Yeah. So anyway, we haven't expended any money and we're not, oh, if they pay us, then we're just gonna turn around and pay Roger. So he can pay McCullough back because he's already paid for it. Yeah, so this is, and the job is done. He's already done it.
It's already finished.
Yeah, yeah. Is that clear as mud?
Yeah.
So I thought it was just gonna be an agreement with me to sign it on that. But then they send the agreement. They send the agreement and it's the city council Signatures. And actually, they said, you know, one of the people up there. One of the girls that work there said, well, that shouldn't be. It should just be with you, so. You get tired of penny.
So move.
Get tired of arguing with them and.
Move for approval.
I'm not voting on it until I read it. So.
I don't care. If somebody goes second.
I'll second.
Okay, Chad?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Randy? This is this is.
It's a lot of lot of paperwork.
It, you know what?
It just. If it's just paperwork, I mean, what are we doing?
I didn't print out the, I could have printed out the. Engineering work.
This is.
The grade as it went long for for a mile.
As long as it's not costing the city any money. No.
We're just the middleman.
No, they're paying.
That's all we are. It's just something that.
I'll say yes.
And yes.
Okay, motion passes by vote. Sign the agreement, so.
Like Wabash mud.
So Endot didn't pay us or Roger or whoever, so McCullough can get paid. Or Roger can get paid back. It's pretty confusing. They even tell me anything about that when, when they call me, engineer, NDOT called. See Taylor. Yeah, yeah, they said they'd do it, they'd do the work for sixteen thousand dollars and they agreed to it and he said, and Roger said, I'll pay him, because I knew how, how long it'll take the state to pay.
So, intergovernmental agreement in the meantime.
Yep. Send it back to them. Okay, we have regarding the, uh, baseball, softball and soccer. We have, um, three proposals. There. Okay, there's one for, um, Little League Baseball, Girls Softball and Covington Youth Soccer League to pay a hundred dollars for outside tournaments and twenty-five dollars a team. One that has, uh, a hundred dollars a tournament, no, no, um, fees per team and one with no fees at all.
Is the second one the hundred dollars only, is that just for baseball?
That's, no, that's for. Girls Softball, Boys Baseball and Soccer, if Soccer had outside tournaments, which I don't think they ever have. So they used to have the tournaments within.
The league.
The thing, yeah. So those are the three proposals.
So what's protocol on those, do we have to read them and then vote at a later meeting? Or is there, is this like considered the first reading of those, or can we just vote on it tonight?
We actually kind of knew, read them last time, we just said we'd present it three different ways. You could talk about it and figure out which one you were going to go with.
I would, I would make a, you know, I mean, my feeling on it, I don't think you want to charge them as much as what they, what it has been, I think they should pay a hundred dollars a tournament. That's my two cents worth. Where the council in two thousand seventeen and nineteen was wrong, when Rhonda Bowling, who's been here forty-one years, when she played softball, um, they paid a hundred dollars a tournament. She was on our team, so they, they paid, it was a hundred dollars a tournament back, how many, oh, many years ago?
Long time ago.
Thirty, forty years.
Some years, yeah.
So.
Can you repeat the three proposals again?
One, one is a hundred dollars and twenty-five dollars a team for outside tournaments, not the Covington team, because there's usually, I think, one Covington team. The one is without the twenty-five, so it's just a hundred dollars a tournament and one is no fees at all.
Which prior to twenty seventeen, the hundred dollars is the one that existed then and this.
It has continued to exist.
Yeah. But the hun- the hundreds plus the twenty-five is what's been made on the books since twenty seventeen.
Since twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'll put my two cents in, I don't think we should charge anything, I don't think there should be any fees for any nonprofits, whether you're running a five K, whether you're doing a tournament, I don't care what you're doing, I don't think, uh, any fee at all, it's, it's for their fundraisers and they should be able to, to keep all that, that's my take.
Um, I will say, um, Covington themselves gets money for each team that plays, right, like three hundred dollars for each team that plays in a tournament?
Three fifty this year.
Um, I say a hundred dollars, I vote for the hundred dollar one.
So does, just to go back onto the previous existing one, does, do each of the organizations now pay for their own electric and water?
I think so.
Your, your proposal, what, what you're suggesting was to do which one?
A hundred dollar?
I'll second that.
I think we're just getting thoughts now, right? I mean, it's not, there's not a motion out, we're just still discussing. If you're going to do these guys as a nonprofit, then you're going to have to take in the five Ks and, and anything else.
No, you don't have to take in the five K.
They're not, they're not.
The five Ks last for, you know, fifteen, twenty nonprofit, two or three a year.
I don't, I mean, I don't care if they have one a year, it's still, you're, you're charging one nonprofit or the youth organization, you're charging them, but you're not charging. So.
Are you a five oh one C three or five oh three C one or whatever?
Five oh three C.
Five oh.
You're charitable then, not, not for profit. There is a distinction. One's five oh one C and one's a oh one C three.
We're the C three.
That's the charitable.
Yeah.
So what's the difference?
One can't make profit and the other one's indeed a charity.
So one can profit, but one can't?
Well, no, neither can, can really profit.
Okay.
Well, here's the thing, even if they pay a hundred dollars per tournament, it goes back to the city. And then if you ca- you, you know, that's, that's what the council's for, is to come back and ask the city, hey, this is going on or whatever, can you guys contribute to that financially or whatever? I, you know, the day and age that we're living in, there's no accountability, there's no responsibility for our youth, you guys pay them to pick up trash. Where, and I can venture to say that all of our parents, if we played, that was part of our responsibility is to pick up trash and to contribute, or we wouldn't be on the team. And that's the downfall that we have as a community, is that we're not holding our kids, giving them responsibility to, um, contribute and take care of what we have and teach them responsibility and rules. So to me, it's an investment from the organization, teaching them, hey, you still have to have accountability. And it's gone back to the city and then again, who, regardless of who is on council or who the mayor is, you know, that's just part of it. It's not the same thing as a five K, we're not comparing apples to apples, because you guys, it's a, it's a whole summer event. And this isn't something that we've just recreated, it's happened. I mean, this is something that's been going on for years and years and years with the organization, so. I, my thoughts are, we should at least charge something.
In the past, it was too, it was brought up that it was, they were charging because people use the pavilions. And when they use the pavilions, then other people can't use them. And they call in and, and ask about having a family reunion and they say, well, if there's a ball tournament, we don't want to because it, it'd be too busy, so.
So I thought, is the public allowed to speak?
Yeah.
I thought that the seventeen ordinance, uh, was to clarify and put the hundred dollars a tournament in to the city ordinance and also to put in the ordinance that the league got to take care of the fields themselves. But those, those were the two.
Is that what it says?
The ordinance, because I don't think prior to that.
It does say maintain.
Maintain their fields.
That becomes a little bit of a gray area as to what.
Maintaining what you're mowing, correct?
Could be.
Could be dirt, could be grass, could be.
Totally re-sodding and re-seeding if you had the wrong people involved.
So two years ago, before I took over, the Little League was paying a hundred sixty dollars a week to have the three fields mowed.
Who was mowing them?
I can't remember, it was a buddy or somebody that was on the board and then.
They were paying, they were paying the hard money.
And so that's, that's what the Dixie Chopper's sitting in the shit that I fixed up and I mowed them all last year myself. Um, so the league keeps the three baseball fields up and renting for eight months of the year and the league pays for all of that. So, I mean, the city is getting service from the Little League because other people use the fields as well, the fields are open to the public, we don't put a lock on, anybody that wants to go down there on a weekend or a night can go down, turn the lights on, play baseball on the field, because it's a safe park.
Yeah, we don't charge any fees, people from Danville can come over and rent the park, I mean, they can rent, they rent the fields, so.
So, but to rent the fields, they have to, if they want to take over the whole fields for the weekend, they have to have approval if they're going to have the tournament or something.
No, I don't think so.
See if it's available.
You, I mean.
I don't know.
I think you're saying.
If it's available, if it's available, that's what.
Right, first come, first. First whoever's there gets it unless there's a, a ballgame scheduled.
Yeah.
So the ballgames that are scheduled have to go through the city council, that's why you guys approved the tournament dates.
Yep.
And it's in there also that they all have to be approved?
So I just, my, my opinion is I think the city gets service from us taking care of the field and maintenance could be a million things, it could be dirt, grass, grass seed, it could be mowed, it could be weed eaten, you know, maintaining the fences, the dugout fences, the safety barriers, you know, the drains that are in to keep the water off stuff, um, the bases, which costs money, so.
I, did you say, I think in two thousand seventeen, it was that, that was when you guys, that the Little League was responsible for taking care of their field.
Yeah, okay, I was just, I thought that the maintenance of the fields came in in seventeen, but I also think that's the time that the hundred dollars a tournament went into black and white.
It was, it was, no, no, it's been.
Twenty-five per team, did you add it on then?
That was in nineteen.
Yeah.
So talking about the seventeen ordinance, so prior to the seventeen.
The hundred is, was, has been for thirty or forty years.
Right, and I think seventeen was the first time it was put right in.
I think it was.
That's the only one I can find, so I don't like, I think it was just, the park superintendent was in charge of that, he knew when somebody was coming in, he went and he collected the money.
Yeah.
At the same time, I don't know of any other ordinance that exists that requires any fees for the fact that you use it for regular play exclusively. This is only creating the exception for out-of-town tournaments coming into the community. You know, it's, I, I think a hundred dollars for tournaments is fair, um, it's a cooperative agreement, it goes both ways, you guys are certainly getting a benefit for it, we're certainly getting benefit for it and I, but I think you're doing the work, a lot of the work. Sweat equity and in return, they're looking for actual equity from the city side of it for a lot of the same things we do, including providing the facility. Whereas if this was a privately owned facility, we'd be talking about multiples and multiples and multiples of us, which we're not. You know, we're saying and recognizing this as a function of what we do for the community.
I'm sorry, is it or is it?
It is, is.
Any, anything we get, Bob, it goes into the non-reverting fund, we pay, we spend it on the park anyway.
I'm sorry, how many tournaments did you say you were going to have this coming year?
Uh, we turned in, I think, two or three meetings, we turned in four dates that were supposed to be approved for tonight. And I'm also, when you guys are ready, I've got the girls softball tournament dates, because they.
So that's just baseball that's been turned in so far?
They, they have four also.
We have three.
They have three.
Seven total?
And of course, the tournaments are fundraisers to put money in the checkbook and out of that checkbook, we have to maintain the fields.
In two thousand nineteen, um, or so, I don't vote on anything, but when they talked about it, it was, you know, and it was unanimous that it passed, that they would pay twenty-five dollars a team. At that time, the, I believe they were charging two fifty, two seventy-five and, uh, I know they said, you know, anybody who comes here, they, they, or if, if we go somewhere else, they always pay a facility fee, is, is included in that. Of course, we're probably one of the lower ones at, at twenty-five dollars a team and, uh, but, you know.
I mean, I understand all that, the thing is, is whatever tournament fee you guys decide on, the Little League's going to have to pay, that's just what it is.
Yeah.
If that tournament fee goes to parks and recreation and then the Little League needs something through parks and recreation, it'd be nice for that to be paid for. Perfect example would have been the concession stand. I mean, the Little League uses the concession stand, it's a city building. You know, if we have to pay into the fund and the money goes to the park, then it should be divided amongst everything in the park. If the boys need something.
What do you mean, what do you mean?
If our tournament fees go into the park and recreation.
Right, right.
And then if we do need something, we should be able to come ask if, if we need something out of parks and recreation, unlike Paula just said.
Yeah, okay, we spent, and I told you the last time, we spent.
Setting the lights.
We spent seventy-five hundred dollars on that up there, new, new contacters for the, for the lights and, but it was fifteen thousand, the grant paid for half of it. We spent, um, thirty-five thousand on a new restroom, so, you know, I, you know, we pay, we pay two hundred dollars a month to clean that restroom, so.
And it's a public restroom that anybody can use.
And it works out, I mean, the only ones that use it pretty much are, are, you know, girls and boys, girls softball, boys baseball. Because.
It was location.
Yeah, because of the, at the time.
It was built there to take care of the.
No, it was, it, yeah.
Otherwise.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's lots, yeah, we, I give the keys to baseball and softball, that way it doesn't get vandalized, so.
Which has also happened.
Well, yeah, yeah. So, it, it, we don't leave it open, you know, all the time.
Got certain specific requests, come ask.
We spent sixteen thousand on new fixtures in the middle bathroom, when was it Casey, last year? You know, the. So, you know, we're not trying to be hard-nosed or anything.
Is the storage side of that building used by both baseball and softball?
No, we have the old cement building that flows and then we have the old, uh, wooden shed that we need to regen.
When we built it, Bob wasn't part of it, but girls softball went to the foundation, got a grant. Plus, they put actual money in. Plus, they put actual money into it, so, because they needed it, they wanted a storage thing. Instead of just a, you know, a yard barn, so they did that, so. Boys weren't interested in putting any money in at that time, they said, we don't wanna put any money in, but they still get to use it. But. And Bob wasn't there, so.
The only portion we use is the restroom, so they don't use the shed.
Exactly, yep.
There's no other discussion, I'd move to accept the one that's a hundred dollar flat fee only.
One more thing. Reports, they're supposed to share a financial statement and I don't know if it says in the proposed ordinance annually.
I, I do think it says that, you're, they're supposed to give us a financial report.
I know it says.
They must file a financial report with the city of Covington.
But it should say annually.
And I'm sure it does.
Cause I didn't see it when we read it the last time.
Covington Girl Softball, Covington Youth Baseball League, Covington Youth Soccer League are required to file financial reports with the city council. It hardly ever happens.
And it should say annually.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm asking that to be in there and if it's added to it, then I second Brad's motion for the hundred dollar fee per tournament.
I have no problem with that.
It's fine, you can sign the back page and I'll just make the change in that ordinance.
Okay.
Randy?
No.
Brad?
Yes.
Cathy?
Yes.
Chad?
No.
Paula?
Yes.
Motion passes to. Charge a hundred dollars. Per tournament, uh, no. No team fees.
Excuse me, where are we gonna get the approval on the tournament dates tonight?
I think they voted on those at the last meeting, they said it was fine, the council is all in agreement.
Okay, did you want me to give you the girls' three tournament dates real quick?
Sorry, Bob.
Did you want me to give you the girls' softball tournament dates?
Yes.
April twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth. May thirtieth and thirty-first. And June thirteenth and fourteenth. And the text I got said that they might try to add another one, but they don't know yet, so. I'm assuming with those dates, if they add another one, it's probably gonna be late July.
When, when was yours?
May second and third, May sixteenth and seventeenth, June twentieth, twenty-first and July eleventh and twelfth.
Say that again, May.
May second and third.
Sec, sixteenth and seventeenth.
Seventeenth, June twentieth, twenty-one and July eleventh and twelfth.
Randy, do you know of anything going on those days, any of those days?
Not off the top of my head.
They all should be the same as what they did for the last.
Sure, they're fine.
Yes, it's just the other two copies.
Anybody wanna make a motion on that?
I make a motion to approve him as long as there aren't any other conflicts already on the calendar.
I'll second it.
Okay, Randy?
I'm sorry.
Acceptance of the tournament.
Motion and the tournaments.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Brad?
Yes.
Cathy?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes. You already did the one.
Gar, what do you have for us?
Well, as you guys have seen, the training facility has been installed. We will be doing training on that facility this coming weekend. Pretty busy out there, start Friday morning. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Friday and Saturday, we, as myself as instructor, we talk how to teach students. And on Sunday, we will teach, we'll have people come in, it's called light and fight. We'll command a live fire, we'll teach them fire behavior, code advancement, all that stuff. So, that's going on this weekend, kind of like a lot of the time, be nice to us. We're gonna proceed on and get that done.
You said teach them.
So basically what it is, they're teaching us how to set the fires, make sure we're doing it safely.
State.
Yeah, and then we turn around and there'll be students who have signed up for the light fight class. And we as instructors will teach them how to. Fight fire, fire, show them fire behavior, how to ban smoke line in, you know, see the different, how the fireworks and all that extinguish it. And we'll just continue to do that.
Who's signed up at this point?
Well, we have various people that have signed up, uh, right now, we've only got about ten or twelve students that have signed up, we hope we have more.
Individuals, not departments.
Yeah, individuals, yeah, from other departments, our surrounding departments.
Right.
At one time, there was, uh, there was discussion, comments made that there would be upwards of thirty instructors will be there. Going through this process, uh, I'm not sure it's gonna be quite thirty instructors, but it's gonna be close, so. We may have upwards of fifty to sixty people out there off and on through the whole weekend. So, uh, this will be pretty busy. Public notice, there's gonna be smoke, uh, and we'll be coming off of that and it will travel. So, as part of my obligation to tell you as the fire chief that. Notification of public that there will be smoke coming off the device and it will travel all the way into the city. So, depending on how, how, how it went, so. I notified the sheriff, I do all that, that's all been done, we gotta notify you guys too.
Nine one one though.
I gotta tell them too. So, um, some of the training, we had to go through some of the pre-training for the utilization on this very detail. So you know, we can't just go out there and set fires, we have to file for permits, state, item, all that. Before we can actually do a live fire burn. We have to go through extensive pre-inspections of the people's gear. If it is not up inspection, they cannot participate. Pretty detailed process.
So each, each time you run a class, you've got to get.
Each time we do a lot of fire burn out there, yes. Now, any other type of training, not necessarily, we will set up guidelines to what we will allow, that, we can come in, stuff like that. So anyway, you're more welcome to come out anytime, see how things are going. Just let me know if you're there, if we have the note, but. Though I see, though I see what they call notify that there's people there, general public is there. So that you don't wander around and get yourself caught in some area you're not supposed to be in.
Well, and is there going to be a designated place for public to?
Probably will be, yes, that everything we will learn as we get there and understand and, but. You guys, like I said, more welcome to come out and see how this works. See the training, type of training we'll be doing like that, so. I'm very excited, been through it, some of you take a trip out there, walk through it. You'll see there's a lot of potential. Things to do and I think this is gonna be very exciting for this area, period. Good friend of mine teaches a lot of classes up in Benton County, there's some discussion, they'll probably come down, do some training down here. It's very hard for them to get into the city a lot, get to do training, fly fire burn trains, so this will open the door for them.
It's a great, great facility.
It is.
Yeah, yeah.
Been coming for a long time, glad to see you.
I talked with Casey, there's a couple things we could address out there because of the weather coming in, that's all being taken care of.
Thank you.
Other than that, that's all I got.
Hey, I'm sorry, Mr. Billman? Are you Mr. Billman? I'm sorry, are you? What's your name, sir? Okay, did you have something for us?
I just had a question.
Okay.
It's on the trail for the electric bikes?
Yes.
Will three wheels be allowed? Three-wheel electric bike?
Uh, is it a one, class one or two?
That's it, yeah, I have two. Class one and class two. Is it gonna be allowed?
The ordinance says class one and class two e-bikes are allowed on the trail. It does not specify how many wheels, so.
Okay, yeah, should be. Yep, you're welcome. Sir, I'm sorry, you. What's your name?
Dean Bergen.
Yeah, Dean, I know you.
I do.
Can I help you?
We're just here to observe and.
Okay.
Have concerns about the stray cats.
Oh, we all have concerns about stray cats. Yep.
Does he know about the claws?
Yeah, you know about claws and claws, I mean.
We know a little bit.
You can trap them, take them up and have them. Spayed or neutered.
You gotta make your appointment and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, not, not an ideal situation.
Someone said Ace Vet Mary is doing something out there, I don't know if it's a lower cost or if it's totally paid for, but might try Ace.
Is there any other options that city, I don't want it. I'm willing to help.
Be willing to trap them or put a light trap out? Okay. I just, you know. Okay. Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Welcome to the council meetings.
I just haven't. Okay.
And we would stay in remote.
Yeah.
We were very quiet.
Yeah. I, I just hadn't seen you for a long time, Dean, so, yeah, thanks for coming. Casey?
I don't have anything new.
Okay, great.
Uh, just kinda getting ready for winter, we pulled the UV bulbs and cleaned them, stored them away for the winter.
Okay.
We had a pump fail over the weekend. Out of a self-pump, but in the scum trough, it kind of, skimmers off the clarifier. Uh, we pulled it today and F J F took it with him and gonna go over and assess it, see if we need to repair or replace. Meanwhile, I've got a submersible in there doing, doing the job until we get that back. That happened over the weekend, kind of made a little bit of a mess down there, but other than that, we're learning. This is first real winter we've had on the new, all the new equipment down there, so a lot to learn, we're learning, but. All the leaves that fall in the clarifiers makes a mess and we didn't have that to do more.
Yeah.
It's just the way it's designed.
Yeah, yeah.
There's still a little bit of a learning curve to get through, but.
Yeah.
It's still, everything's going good.
Good.
Just kinda getting ready for winter.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
To clarify, Casey, you are actively vacking at this point, right? And it's, and it's supposed to be through, do we have an, an end date yet?
It's like freeze to the ground.
We would hope it.
To be determined down the road.
We'd hope it lasts through Thanksgiving, till Thanksgiving. And.
Okay.
It's been looking pretty good.
Weather's been really cooperative.
Did you win a ride today? Okay. Okay.
Good deal.
Yep, okay, yep, you still got the, you still got the. Took it back, okay, that's fine. Um, Randy? I don't have anything. Brad?
I'm good with that, answer that question.
Cathy?
No, nothing else.
Chad?
No.
Paula?
Well, since you asked, I'm just kidding, I don't have anything.
Carol, you have anything, girls? Nothing? Yeah, I want to announce that Gene Phi is a journeyman, blectration.
That paperwork's about handled.
We have all the paperwork, yeah, yeah, so, all done. Okay. All meetings adjourned.